Good evening. Welcome to this meeting at seven o'clock. All the selectmen are present. We'll start by the transmitting of Treasury warrants, thirty-five, thirty-five A, thirty-six, and thirty-six A.
Motion to warrant says right by the chairman?
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous. We have a couple of meeting minutes to approve, February thirteenth, two thousand twelve, and February twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve. No questions? I guess we could take these up together.
I move to approve the minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand twelve, as well as February twenty-seventh, two thousand twelve, as written.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous. Our seven o'clock appointment is a public hearing with acceptance of streets at town meeting, Fiorenza Drive, Jake's Lane, Marion Street, two portions, and My Way Circle.
Mr. Chairman, unless there are any questions, as you know, this is the second meeting that we've had relative to this issue. At the last meeting, the board voted their intention to go forward with laying out the streets. At that time, we provided you with a memorandum from the engineering director indicating that the subdivisions were inspected during the construction process and have all been completed to the satisfaction of the division and the planning board and the Department of Public Works. So unless the board has questions or anybody in the audience has questions, we'd need a motion. First, I would suggest a motion to close the public hearing if no one else has anything to say, and then a motion which I'd be happy to suggest and if a board member could offer it.
Okay. Any questions, comments from the audience? Question, comments from the board? Or a motion to close the public hearing? motion so moved.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, I would...
I'm sorry. One extension. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Mr. Chairman, I would suggest that the board consider a motion whereby the board would accept Fiorenza Drive, Jake's Lane, both portions of Marion Street that are listed on the plans, and My Way Circle for further action relative to the acceptance of streets at the annual town meeting on May fifth, two thousand and twelve.
Questions, comments, or a motion to that effect?
I'd make a motion that stated by the town manager relative to those streets.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? Four-four, one extension. Thank you. Our seven-oh-five appointment, right on time, is Nancy Valli, Executive Director, Chamber of Commerce, to request to conduct the Town of Wilmington's eighth annual half marathon and five K run walk on Sunday, September twenty-third, two thousand and twelve. Hi, Ms. Valli, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
As you mentioned, my name is Nancy Valli. I am the Executive Director of the Wilmington Chamber of Commerce, and I am here on behalf of the Chamber of Board of Directors to request permission for the Chamber to once again organize and implement the Town's annual half marathon and five K road race. This year, we have scheduled it with your permission for Sunday, September twenty-third, same location at ten Waltham Street in front of WCTV, again, same time, ten to two. Last year, we had five hundred and twenty-seven total participants, of that, three hundred and eighty-five were racers and one hundred and forty-two walkers. The event attracts many out-of-town racers and running clubs, as well as athletes, from our schools and community. We provide a fun and festive atmosphere, including the opportunity for Chamber members to set up tables to promote their products and services. We would again work closely with the Wilmington Police Department to ensure safety throughout the courses and proceeds from the race benefit scholarships for Wilmington graduating seniors, and we will again provide a donation to the Town Scholarship Fund like we did last year. The Chamber also donates a portion of the proceeds to a specific charity of choice, which we have not chosen yet this year. Last year, we donated two thousand dollars to the TOPPS Soccer Outreach Sports Program here in Wilmington. With that, I request your permission to move forward.
Very nice presentation. Questions, comments, or a motion for the board? There's no conflict, correct?
No, sir.
Well, I'll make a comment if I could, because I feel like I must. Yeah, under Nancy's direction at the Chamber and with a lot of help that she employs from Chamber members and others around the community, this event has thankfully continued. I'm a big fan of this event, and many may recall that this event was run by another committee for a number of years after Wilmington's two-seventy-five anniversary. That's right, right? And it was in peril or in danger of going away, and the Chamber of Commerce was approached to consider continuing it. And fortunately, the Chamber of Commerce, of which I am on the member of the Board of Directors of the Chamber as well, we collectively gathered and put it on, and again, under Nancy's very, very astute direction and tireless efforts, it has continued to be, and I would even suggest to you that it has become a very, even more successful event. Running clubs from around the region really look forward to and put it on their radar screen. So I hope you, my colleagues, will certainly support the event, and I congratulate Nancy for the good work that she's done on behalf of the Chamber.
Well said.
Thanks.
I don't have any specific questions, other than just in conjunction with no conflict, how things went last year from a police perspective. Is it something that the Town has been able to handle, and it has been of little of no issue?
Well, no, I mean, the police do a pretty good job. They have, they put a lot of manpower into the race, but it's certainly something worth doing in our mind, and the chief has not indicated to me that it has, you know, become either burdensome or that there was any problems as a result of the race. The Chamber does a wonderful job in terms of staffing it through with volunteers, so it's pretty well organized, and despite the large volume of participants.
Perfect.
It also, it's over kind of fast, too. It's a, what time does it begin?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah. But it's not like one of these all-day affairs where people are still streaming in like the Boston Marathon. By midday, effectively, the race is off the street, and the participants are over on Waltham Street.
And one of the reasons we've kept it on Waltham Street, I mean, we would love to move it to the Common or some other location, but we've kept it at Waltham Street for that specific reason. It's the eighth year, this year would be the eighth year, and Lieutenant Desmond has it down pat. He knows exactly what corners to be at, you know, have his officers at, so, you know, we've kept it there for safety reasons.
Certainly, you know, my question is, I don't want anyone to take them out of context. It's more just any time I see a request like this, those are, you know, if it was a restaurant, I'd be thinking, what's the Board of Health have to say, what do the police have to say, things of that nature. So it's more just my due diligence in asking the question. So I think it's a great event and look forward to supporting it.
Very good. Questions, comments? Motion? Questions, comments, motion? Move to grant the request as outlined by Ms. Valli.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor?
I think that's prudent that I abstain, given my membership on the Board of Directors of the Chamber.
Get that? Very good. Thank you. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, our seven-ten hearing is with Joe Mullins, President Wilmington Little League, request to conduct the parade on Saturday, April twenty-first, two thousand and twelve from the common, the Town Common, Rotary Park, in conjunction with opening day ceremonies of Little Leagues. Good evening, Joe.
Good evening, everyone. Just for the record, Rick Hill is now the president of the league. I'm here on behalf of the league, requesting permission to have our annual opening day parade for Saturday, April twenty-first, from the Fourth of July parking lot up Church Street to Rotary Park, where we'll have our opening day festivities, including our ceremonial first pitch. We'll once again honor two Wilmington's local heroes. Then we'll have our opening day game, and the Kiwanis once again are pitching in and cooking hot dogs for over five hundred eager fans. And a little wrinkle we're putting in this year is, I got together with Boy Scout Troop Fifty-Six. We're going to try to involve more of the community and set up a drop-off for the food bank at the staging area of the Swain parking lot, so hopefully, the participants in the parade will also bring, you know, some food for that purpose as well. And then the Boy Scouts will take care of the transport of the food from there right to the food bank.
Excellent. I believe this is the fourth year?
This is our fourth year.
It's, I know we talked earlier today, but it's an amazing day. You guys do a wonderful job. I know the kids really enjoy it.
Yeah.
And I hope we get the weather we've had the last few years, too. That was...
Last year was a little iffy, but one out of four is not going to be bad.
Any questions, comments, or a motion? Mr. Shampoo?
Thank you. Yeah, no, similar comments, Lou. I appreciate it. It's such a great tradition, and I'm so happy, you know, we were all, I think, universally happy when the tradition came back. And every year that I've had the opportunity to participate in it, both as a coach or a dad or as a selectman, it's gotten better every year. So thank you for continuing the tradition, and it'll be my pleasure to vote in favor of it.
Excellent. With that said, I'll make a motion that we grant permission to the Wilmington Little League to conduct the annual parade on Saturday, April twenty-first, two thousand and twelve, as outlined with all the criteria set forth by the Town.
Second.
Motion made second, all in favor? She is.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Nice work. Keep it good. Good luck.
Hot dogs, you said, right? Oh, I missed it.
Okay. Seven-fifteen, seven-fifteen, a Board of Selectmen discussion, review of proposed town meeting warrant.
Mr. Chairman, it's customary at this particular meeting, you know that we have introduced both the non-petitioned and petitioned articles to the board and to the public through this meeting over the past two meetings, and I'd like to do a brief review of the articles that are before you. We've taken into consideration anything that the board has requested, and then at the end of the meeting, we'll ask the board to consider closing and signing the warrant. And again, I know that you and others have heard this. I'll do it as quickly as I can, but if there's any question, please just stop me. A reminder that Saturday, the twenty-eighth day of April, beginning at eight AM and closing at eight PM, will be the annual town election. At that time, you will be asked to vote for one selectman for a term of three years, two members of the school committee for a term of three years, one moderator for the term of three years, a member of the Housing Authority, and a member of the Redevelopment Authority for a term of five years, a member of the Vocational Technical School Committee for the term of three years. That consists, that is technically Article One of the town meeting. The town meeting itself will begin on May fifth, scheduled to begin at ten-thirty AM at the high school gymnasium at the Church Street, Saturday, the fifth day of May. Article two is to hear reports of committees and act thereon. As I've reported, these are any committees that have been asked to report back to town meeting thereon, and so we will move beyond that article. Article three will be the article that is typically on the warrant, asking to pay any unpaid bills of prior years. This would be years prior to the current year fiscal year two thousand and twelve. We will not be asking for any action on that article. Article four will authorize the treasurer collector, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, to enter into agreements for banking services with one or more banks that do business in the Commonwealth. And Article five will be to appropriate the expenses of the town. That's euphemistically called the budget article, where the moderator will go over the fiscal year two thousand and thirteen budget, and residents will be asked to vote up or down. As you know, the Finance Committee has been meeting and has concluded their meetings at this point for the review of the budget. Article six will be asking the Town to raise funds for the following purchases. First, four replacement police cruisers at a total cost of one hundred and forty-four thousand. Second, a twelve-hundred-and-fifty-gallon-per-minute pumper for the fire department, which we anticipate will cost approximately six hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Obviously, it will be competitively bid. We are intending to pay a portion of that from a capital project closeout of approximately fifty-nine thousand four hundred dollars. We'll be asking voters to purchase two pieces of equipment for the Department of Public Works, a replacement vacuum street sweeper of approximately two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and a replacement backhoe loader of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, both vehicles assigned to the Highway Division. Article seven will seek to raise sixty-eight thousand four hundred dollars for the purchase of twenty new digital portable and twelve new mobile radios to upgrade the police communication system. Article eight is an article requesting funds for three roof projects. They are the roof area at the Wildwood School, approximately three hundred thousand dollars, two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for roof areas over the West Intermediate School, and additional ninety thousand dollars for the roof area over at the Wilmington Memorial Library. We will be requesting, in that case, in terms of the library, which we expect to cost about ninety thousand dollars, to be funded through capital stabilization funds. Article nine seeks approximately eight hundred thousand dollars for the purchase of the windows and exterior doors at the North Intermediate School with the assistance of the School Building Authority Grant Program. We have not yet heard whether or not the grant will be made available. We are hoping that we find out this month. They have meetings in March and in May to make that determination. As soon as we do, we will certainly inform the board. The Town's being asked to raise seventy-eight thousand dollars to repaint the interior of the Shawshine Elementary School, forty-two thousand dollars to replace the eight existing garage doors of the Department of Public Works, and one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to undertake various improvements and repairs to municipal and school facilities through a municipal facilities, through a miscellaneous facilities account. The Town is asking, under Article thirteen, to raise ninety thousand dollars for technology improvements at the middle school, which would include the installation of a wireless network. Article fourteen is the article that the Town asks for each year, not necessarily Article fourteen, but the substance of the article is to transfer into various line items of the current year's budget, in this case fiscal year two thousand and twelve, from any other line items of the budget through the use of available funds. So we will be making a determination as to whether there are any shotfalls in the current budget, and if there are any surpluses in any accounts, we'll be coming to the town meeting to request that we transfer funds accordingly. Article fifteen would continue the Town's senior citizen tax workoff program, and we would ask for the expenditure of, the authorization to expend fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty dollars, which would enable us to put at least twenty-four seniors into positions in both town and school departments. Article sixteen seeks six thousand dollars for the observance of Memorial Day and Veterans' Day, and Article seventeen seeks seven hundred and fifty dollars for the veterans of foreign wars clubhouse. Article eighteen would vote to authorize or reauthorize, as the case may be, revolving accounts pursuant to the mass general laws for various boards and commissions of the Town. Article nineteen is the action required to further the acceptance as public ways those streets that the board has spoken to, namely, Fiorenza Drive, My Way Circle, Jake's Lane, and two portions of Marion Street Extension. Article twenty is the amendment to the curfew bylaw that allows, as an alternative to criminal prosecution, the Town to take action through a non-criminal disposition procedure. Article twenty-one would enable the Town to accept as a gift a parcel of land on the Andover Heights definitive subdivision plan for the purposes of allowing the Town to appropriate drainage maintenance. And Article twenty-two would authorize the Town to expend one million one hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars through the use of available funds, free cash, for the purchase of the property at Nine Cross Street, a little over twenty acres, commonly referred to as Yentals Farm. And Article twenty-three would request that the General Court seek enactment of special legislation to dissolve the Town of Wilmington Redevelopment Authority. The remaining articles are petition articles. They begin with Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four was submitted by Antonio Prokoko, Rena Watney, and others to see if the Town will vote to transfer a parcel of land on Lawrence Street, such that it would go out for competitive bid and purchase. Article twenty-five is a similar request to purchase town on land that are located on two paper streets, Mary Street and Stanley Street, which really is land, I guess best described as between Presidential and Burlington Avenue. The petitioner is Craig Newhouse. Article twenty-six seeks to amend the bylaws of the Town to establish, under public regulations, a new bylaw relative to the fencing, fencing that's constructed on residential or commercial zone property within the Town would need to comply with certain elements outlined in the particular bylaw proposal. The petitioner is George Lingefelter. Article twenty-seven, as petitioned by William F. Kavanaugh III, would ask the Town to accept Chapter one thirty-seven of the Acts of two thousand and three, relative to public employees serving in the armed forces of the United States. Article twenty-eight would amend the charter of the Town of Wilmington in two ways. One, relative to the appointment of Town Manager, it would change the term from three years to two years, and it would add, under the section, dealing with qualifications, that in addition to a person especially fitted by education, training, and previous full-time paid experience as a town or city manager, assistant manager, they would add also, or a corporate president. This was petitioned by Kevin McDonald. The Town is being asked to amend the zoning bylaw relative to rezoning from R-twenty to neighborhood business, a parcel of land known as one fifty-nine Church Street, which the current high school sits at. That was a petitioned article by Kevin McDonald. Article thirty asks to see if the Town will vote to preserve Wilmington High School and prevent it from being demolished. That's a petitioned article by Michael Bodnar.
If I could just interrupt on Article thirty, I just thought it was interesting to note that this is verbatim the same article as Article six that was brought to the special town meeting on December sixth. I thought it was interesting that less than half of the petitioners who signed this petition actually bothered to go to special town meeting. So I thought that was kind of interesting. And in fact, the petitioner of Article six at the special town meeting, Mr. McDonald, appears to have signed this petition, but he voted against it at the special town meeting. So I think that's worth noting as we go through these. Thank you.
Article thirty-one is to vote to stipulate a residency requirement for construction jobs for the new high school construction project, which would require contracts to fill construction trade and labor positions who are with individuals who are Wilmington residents. The petitioner is Michael Bodnar. Article thirty-two is to see if the Town will vote to rescind the vote taken at the two thousand and eleven special town meeting to finance the new high school to be constructed at one fifty-nine Church Street. That was petitioned by Kevin McDonald.
Again, if I could interrupt, I thought it was interesting to note on this one, as I counted them, there were fifteen total petitioners, five of whom actually bothered to go to special town meeting the first time we took up the financing for the new high school. Also of those fifteen petitioners, seven didn't even bother voting at the special town election. So as we revisit this thing, to the extent it even legally could make it to the floor, I think that's interesting and important for people to know.
If it legally may make it to the floor.
Article thirty-three is to see if the Town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from free cash a sum of five thousand dollars to establish a town website for the purpose of allowing residents of the Town to post problems and offer solutions. That is a petitioned article by Kevin McDonald. Article thirty-four is to see if the Town will vote to prevent Wilmington High School from being demolished and appropriate from available free cash funds, private foundation grant funds, or government grant funds, a sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to design and engineer a transformation of Wilmington High School into a community college on the second floor and business space on the first floor to be combined into a co-op work-study economic and educational development. Petitioner is Kevin McDonald. Article thirty-five is to transfer to, the sum of two hundred, or appropriate, the sum of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars to conduct a feasibility study for the construction of a high school at Nine Cross Street. That also is petitioned by Kevin McDonald.
If I could just jump in on that one, to spend two hundred and fifty thousand dollars on a feasibility site for a twenty-acre site, roughly half of which is wetlands, being proposed by folks who thought we were shoe-horning a new high school in a thirty-acre site. Again, I think worth noting.
Article thirty-six seeks to rescind the comprehensive storm-water management bylaw that is currently in the bylaws of the Town. That is a petitioned article by Kevin McDonald. Article thirty-seven seeks to update and revise the official map with the inclusion of Poplar Street, and Article thirty-eight seeks to do the same thing, except for the, in this case, the inclusion of Polk Street. Both of these articles are the petition of Mark Nelson. And Article thirty-nine is to establish a bylaw requiring the Town Treasurer to deposit all town free cash funds in accounts at credit unions in Massachusetts as opposed to banks, and that was petitioned by Kevin McDonald and Michael Bodnar. As you know, the Finance Committee and Planning Board will hold a public hearing to review all of the articles, and again, petitioners are certainly invited to attend, to speak to their articles. That's on Tuesday, March twentieth, beginning at seven PM here at the Town Hall.
Okay. No, Mr. McDonald, you're not on the board. We'll still work on the board here. Any questions? Any questions, comments, or a motion to close and sign the warrant? I'd move to make a motion that we open and close and sign the warrant this evening.
Second.
Okay, motion made the second, all in favor? Unanimous.
Gentlemen and lady, there are five copies of the warrant, and I would appreciate if you would sign each one. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. McDonald, no, no.
No vote of vote?
No. Communications.
Okay, communications. The first item on communication is a report of the Planning Board to the Board of Selectmen relative to the petitioned request to place Poplar Street and Polk Street on the official map, and this is a requirement that the Planning Board issue such a report in both instances concerning an article such as this, and they have submitted that report to the Board of Selectmen. They will also provide their report at the public hearing, and they have also submitted the report to the Town Clerk, although I don't believe there's any responsibility or obligation to do so. They have done that as well. In this case, the petitioner, Mark Nelson, requests that Poplar Street from the intersection of Walnut Street and Poplar Street, for addition, for a distance of two hundred and thirty-nine feet, more or less be placed on the Town of Wilmington official map. The Planning Board at its regularly scheduled meeting of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twelve recommends the request for exclusion on the official map be denied, and the board voted to issue the following report. As required in Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one E, F, G, W, and Y, to amend the official map, a plan for adoption or layout of the proposed roadway must be submitted. No such plan showing limits of a right-of-way drainage slope, utility installation, and construction detail, and materials has been submitted for review. The Planning Board respectfully recommends that Poplar Street, as requested in this petition, not be added to the official map or laid out in any way. petition, not be added to the official map or laid out in any way. There's a similar report on Polk Street as well. In that case, the request was that Polk Street from the intersection of Walnut Street and Polk Street, for a distance of 527 feet, more or less be placed on the Town of Wilmington official map, with the same recommendation of denial by the Planning Board. Mr. Chairman, the Board has received correspondence from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding unemployment reform. A colleague, who is a former Wilmington resident, as a matter of fact, and the manager out in Linfield, Bill Gustus, raised some issues about unemployment that a number of us have been talking about for years. But he got some bang for his buck, really, in this one, in that newspapers have picked up what he has suggested has been an abuse by certain municipal employees, or retired municipal employees and others, in terms of being able to receive funding for unemployment benefits. And so they're asking, they're bringing this to our attention, the MMA is, we pretty much know about this, they are asking us to respond to the Secretary of Labor and Workforce Development, Joanne Goldstein's request that she provide information relative to similar situations that we have experienced with regard to unemployment claims. And we certainly will do that to try to bring more attention to the unemployment benefit abuse issue that was raised more recently by Mr. Gustus. The Board also has communication from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the Chapter 90 bond bill. Six weeks after the original announcement at the MMA that Governor Patrick has filed the $200 million Chapter 90 bond bill with the legislature, we are asking, through the MMA and through the actions of those who attended the MMA, for the authorization of a greater amount of funding, specifically at least at a $300 million level instead of a $200 million level, which would enable municipalities, including Wilmington, to do more roadway construction. The Board has an announcement from the Massachusetts Municipal Association regarding the Selectmen's Association Regional Meeting, which is going to be held on April 4th at the MMA offices in Boston from 11:30 a.m. to 1:15 p.m. for any of the selectmen who work in the greater Boston area. There is a limited capacity for the event, so pre-registration is required. And if anybody is interested, they can either register directly, and I would suggest as soon as possible, I'll contact Beverly at the office, and she can make the arrangements for you. We have received correspondence from Peter Katusian, the Middlesex County Sheriff, who provided the members of the Board with a report on his inaugural year in office that details new policies, programs, and accomplishments of the Middlesex Sheriff's Office in 2011. They wanted to bring these initiatives to the attention of the citizens in Middlesex County, and there are reports that have been distributed. And if anybody has any questions about the reports, which all the members have, they're welcome to contact the sheriff. The Board has correspondence from Comcast, specifically Jane Lyman, who writes about price adjustments and indicates that there will be some price adjustments beginning on May 1st to certain video services equipment and installation fees. All of the customers will receive a notice, which we've attached for the press and for the members of the Board of Selectmen, which does show certain increases in those items that I just mentioned. Also, the Board has received a letter from Ms. Lyman to let them know that customers will also receive notices of enhancements to their Xfinity Signature Support Programs, which will provide expanded tech support for computers, home networks, and connected And a third piece of correspondence, Ms. Lyman from Xfinity provides the Board, in accordance with Massachusetts Cable Regulations, information that must be provided each year, including a sample subscriber bill, rate and channel lineup information, et cetera. They also note that the 2011 license fee payment of 50 cents per subscriber is provided. There were 4,086 subscribers as of December 31st, 2011, for a total of $2,043. Mr. Chairman, I provided you and the members of the Board with a very brief but sincere notification relative to my retirement. The Board is aware, of course, that I have decided to retire from my position as Town Manager for the Town of Wilmington. And the purpose of this letter is to advise you that it is my intention to step down from active employment on September 30th, 2012. As discussed previously and subject to the concurrence of the Board, I will make myself available to assist the town as necessary through any period of transition, both prior to and after my departure as Town Manager. I have been especially privileged to have had the opportunity to serve the residents of Wilmington as Town Manager over these past 22 years. It has been an honor to work with dedicated officials, hard-working employees, and countless volunteers who generously give of their time for what truly is a very special community. I'm grateful for your support and that of passboards of Selectmen who have embraced the concept of a professional town government. Wilmington is indeed fortunate to have had so many residents willingly participate in the betterment of our community, and I look forward to joining with them in the years ahead. So primarily, this is to give notice to the Board that there is an official date, and that would be September 30.
Thank you. If I may, at this time, I feel it's appropriate for me to inform the Board and the public that my intentions regarding the process to fill the vacancy that will be left as of the end of September. Simply put, as a town employee, I intend to abstain from the process. However, I will be sure to schedule a discussion item on the Board's next agenda so that the Board can fully discuss the process going forward. I will ask the most recent chairman, Michael Newhouse, to act as chairman during those discussions. I respectfully ask that we hold any discussions tonight about the matter until the next meeting, at which time I will abstain and Mr. Newhouse can serve as the chairman, and the Board can have a full and open discussion about how to proceed.
The Board is being asked to consider a request of Mark Frisjo, the Scoutmaster of Troop 136, to use the former Swain School site and adjacent municipal parking lot for the purpose of a one-day fundraising yard sale on Saturday, June 2nd, 2012. The Board gave permission last year for this similar sale, which was held in May.
No conflicts, right, with the...
No, sir. Not for June 2nd.
Okay. Any questions, comments, or motion?
I move that we grant the request for the group's first choice of June 2nd.
Second. Motion made, second. All in favor? Unanimous.
The Board is being asked to consider signing the license with the Wilmington Farmers' Market Association for the purpose of conducting a farmers' market on Town of Wilmington property. This is as a result of the Board's vote at the last meeting. We do need to sign the license, and I prepared it in the format that the Board had requested. And I would ask that the Board sign the license. I don't even know that another vote is required.
We voted on the last meeting.
Unless we think...
Is it gratification of our...
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't hurt. I suppose we could take a motion, just to sign the license agreement, since you voted to allow them to use it. We now should sign the license agreement.
Okay. Any other questions, or comments, or a motion? So moved. All moved. Second. All in favor? Unanimous?
Two copies, please, second to last.
Nice job on that.
Thank you. The Board is all, that's it, since the Board already signed the warrant for the annual town meeting. That concludes the regular business before the Board, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me, if I may. One other thing came in today. That was, we received an email today from Frank West, captain of the Wilmington Minutemen. On behalf of the Wilmington Company of Minutemen, he is inviting the Town Manager and the Board of Selectmen and their families to attend the 2012 installation of offices. I provided a copy of this to all, but I wanted just to make it public. The event would be held on Sunday, March 18th. This says 2013, but I suspect he means 2012, beginning at 2:00 p.m. And the location for the event is at the Minutemen Headquarters, located behind the Healden Tavern and the Wilmington Town Museum on Salem Street. So if anybody's interested, I've provided you with a letter. You can respond directly or let me know. It also lists the 2012 elected offices as Captain Mike Kelly, Lieutenant Paul Rich, Adjutant Sergeant Frank West, and Company Sergeant Bill Robinson. Thank you.
New Business Committee reports.
Oh, I'm sorry. I turned the page.
Any public comments?
Mr. Bodner? Mr. Migley, I don't know whether to address this to you or Mr. Kyra. Mike, I know you've served a lot of years, and I'm going to miss you. But are we, is the Board of Selectmen going to advertise for a new Town Manager, or are we going to promote him in-house, or...
As I stated... Yeah. If you're going to stay out of that, why don't you just reiterate what the Chairman said tonight, is that at the next regularly scheduled meeting, he'll put it on the agenda so that the Board can discuss it, and he won't have to participate.
And you can hang in a little longer.
Any other public comments? No other public... Oh, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Board. Would you like me to go up there?
No.
Because you mentioned my name a few times on the agenda.
You're good. You're okay.
People at home might not be able to hear.
They can hear you fine.
You sure you don't want me to go up there?
WCTV does a wonderful job.
Okay, that's great. I don't want to get into the fact that you have to recuse yourself from the manager in that it's probably a conflict of interest, having an employee on the Board of Selectmen. But I did want to ask a few questions to the manager on the subject, and with regard to some other articles, the Board in general. Mr. Kyra, a couple of questions. Can you tell us, before you became manager of the Town of Wilmington, what town you served as Town Manager in or Assistant Town Manager in?
I didn't.
You didn't serve as Town Manager? So basically, when I look at the Town Charter, it says that to get the job to be Town Manager, you would have had to have been Town Manager with experience or Assistant Town Manager. And I just find it interesting that you became Town Manager contrary to our Town Charter.
I was appointed temporary Town Manager, and I was appointed for a year. The Board of Selectmen sought an opinion at that time to determine whether or not that would be in conflict with the Town Charter. And the Town Council indicated no, that you could be the temporary Town Manager, which was something that was allowed for in the Charter. And then a year later, the Board saw fit to appoint me as the Town Manager.
So would it be fair to say that that was a clever way to circumvent the law?
I'm not going to contribute to your idea of cleverness.
Okay. Well, you know, I see this happening in other departments since you've taken over, such as the Fire Chief, who was required to take the chief's exam. And I was at a meeting recently, it's been going on for years where he hasn't taken the chief's exam, and he just took it. And so he's been acting chief for a lot of years. So it just seems like the circumventing of the law, the cleverly way that it was done with you, you were able to use it for other departments. And so I actually put an article at the town meeting, which you kind of went over tonight a little bit. Number one, I wanted to change the fact that a manager is hired and contracted for only two years rather than three, because I felt as though entering into a contract with somebody who might turn out to be less than desirable or problematic, if we needed to get rid of him, it would save us money not having to pay him for three years, or give him a golden parachute or something like that. And the other thing that I included in that article was a change to allow the candidate to be the president of a corporation, so that we could get the best possible candidate. And I realize that you just submitted your letter tonight, but we've been hearing for a long time now that you were going to be retiring as manager. And I've yet to see any advertisement or any legitimate work done by the Board to actually get the word out there to start recruiting, if it means nationwide, the best possible manager for the Town of Wilmington.
If I could, Mr. Chairman, I didn't want to interrupt that speech, but first of all, beyond trying to embarrass somebody who is announcing a specific date of retirement after 22 years of distinguished service, and it's not simply my opinion as to the distinction that Mr. Kyra's achieved through the last 22 years, but I think that's a pretty common opinion. But after 22 years of service, other than trying to embarrass somebody, I can't imagine why we're bringing up the circumstances surrounding his appointment at the time that he's retiring. It seems to be a theme under public comments with Mr. McDonald, just to try and embarrass people. So in terms of the... Now, I give you your turn. How about my turn? All right? So in terms of...
You failed to recognize what I said.
So my comments, then, would be, in response to those public comments, beyond that, which I've already said, is that the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen indicated to the rest of the Board it's going to be an agenda item at the next meeting. I don't know how more direct, how simple, and how open and transparent that can be. I don't know what else could be said, other than it's going to be on the agenda at the next meeting. So, you know, as to the substance of the warrant article that Mr. McDonald has submitted as a petition warrant article, you know, it seems that we all give Mr. McDonald more rights than everybody else has. Every other petition article and the proponents, they go to the public hearing before the Finance Committee, and if applicable, the Planning Board. They speak their piece, they make their pitch, and that seems to be sufficient. Apparently, Mr. McDonald gets special attention under public comments. But certainly, we will all have the ability to weigh in on that article at the joint public hearing and also at town meeting.
I'd just like to respond to that, since I've always been of the opinion that the Board of Selectmen, when they announce a public hearing, that when I come here, I'm assuming that this is a public hearing, Mr. Newhouse. Apparently, you disagree that this is a public hearing, based on your comments. But that's all right. You're entitled to your own opinion. The other question I had for the Chairman is, can you tell us, when the manager leaves, are we going to have to pay vacation time, unused vacation time, or sick leave? Can you inform us of anything like that, Mr. Kyra? Is there anybody here?
Again, what?
Can I just say something? It sounds like you're trying to bait this guy to set him up for a state ethics violation if he's talking. That's what it sounds like to me. And I think he made it really clear. And you keep on banging the drum. There's two words I got to use with you, Kevin, and self-satisfaction. You always seem talk negative about everybody. I think you're just baiting this man to say something to file a complaint.
Trying to find out if we...
You're trying to find out about everything.
I haven't seen anything on the town meeting saying that we have to appropriate money, or if there's any going to be a requirement for vacation time or sick leave. I think it's a legitimate question. It's a financial matter, okay? It's an open meeting. Can we have some transparency, Mr. McCoy? I mean, we actually elect you for oversight, checks and... and balances, responsible leadership, and now you don't...
If you ever said me, I think a couple times, a couple meetings ago, Mr. Selectman Newhouse made a good point. He said, "Can you name one good thing that anybody up here has done anything?" You said, "Well, the only good thing could happen if you all get unelected." You know, I'm saying, as people elect us... Wait a minute. You said that.
Mr. McDonald, let him speak.
Let me say that, you know, you're the only person out there who's talking negative. So, you know, for you to come here and say, and I'm sure you're gonna be having an opponent, I'm sure this comes Selectman's election, you're gonna be supporting a candidate, because I noticed you went after Mr. Shampoo on an occasion to bait him. And I'm sure you're gonna be holding a sign for the gentleman that's running for Selectman again, because I saw you in opposition to me across the way. But that's how you operate, and that's how you come across. So I think the chairman did a good job by saying, "He's gonna have it at the next meeting, and we're gonna have it at the next meeting for discussion," how much clearer it can be.
You didn't answer my question, Mr. McCoy. Oh, just to get back to Mr. Newhouse's question, if I could offer any positive thing that members of the board have done, I want to give you some kudos, Mr. McCoy, because I think you took some leadership, and I think you kind of led the charge in getting rid of the last town council, if I'm not mistaken. I believe you mentioned that, you know, you were in favor of getting a new town council? No? That's not right? Or you just don't want to admit to it?
You know, it's...
Well, you know, I realize that, you know, we can't get a straight answer if there's gonna be vacation pay, if there's gonna be sick time. I mean, maybe we just need to, you know, ask somebody other than the board.
Speak to that. I'd like the opportunity to respond as well.
Just as every other employee, I would be eligible for $55 a day for unused sick leave up to 240 days. And if I have vacation time coming to me, I'd be eligible for vacation time, and I would get paid.
Could you tell us?
Mr. McDonald.
How much that is?
I don't know what that is.
Is there some coming in vacation time?
Yes.
Yeah, so basically, we pay you a salary...
Mr. McDonald, Mr. McDonald, you gotta give...
Well, I mean...
You'll have to, you'll have to pay what vacation that I earned and didn't use.
Okay.
And there is some, and we don't have that figure. But you will also, not you, but the town will also be responsible, as they are with every employee. Legally, you are entitled to get vacation time that's not used, and you are...
It's one of the straight answers, that's all.
You are entitled. Well, that's what I'm giving you, the same as I've always given you. You're entitled to, in this case, $55 a day for up to 240 days of unused sick leave. And I can, I can tell you that over 22 years, I probably, if I used a handful of sick days, I would be surprised, frankly.
I know. Okay, well, Mr. McDonald, hold on. No, excuse me, Mr. McDonald.
Go ahead, Mr. House. I just need to respond to a comment that was made earlier. First of all, when Mr. McDonald was trying to bait Mr. McCoy and me at the same time, let's lay the cards on the table here. I'm prior counsel that Mr. McDonald's talking about. And I think what speaks volumes, Mr. McDonald, is that after 17 years in public life, not once, after 17 years, not once either publicly or privately, have you criticized me for any job that I've done. To the contrary, when I was town council, you specifically pulled me aside and thanked me for the assistance that I gave you on the floor of town meeting in fashioning something that you wanted to get to the floor and fixing it so that the residents could take a vote on it. Now, what happens is, after 17 years of never being critical once, because I supported the construction of a new high school that 5,000 people in this town came out and voted for, since that time, you take every opportunity you can find to try and embarrass me and any other proponent of that project. And that's the truth. And you show up at meetings like this, and you ask questions of individual selectmen, and you're, you want to get answers to questions that are 22 years old. You want to get answers to questions about the town manager's contract that was taken up in public ages ago. It was discussed publicly. It's been available publicly. You come out under public comments, and you try and, you try and create this impression that there's some sort of conspiracy to hide the agreement. The fact of the matter is, that has been public information from jump. But it didn't suit your purposes to bring it up then. It suits your purposes to bring it up now. Now, when you go to the chairman and you try and single out a selectman just to embarrass him or her, you play this gotcha game, and you can shake your head, but you do, and anybody who's watched does.
Let's find out if I hear some matters. Let's find out...
Mr. McDonald, hold on, Mr. McDonald.
Back to your point, every selectman's meeting is not a...
Did you try to give it a public comment, right?
Listen.
I believe you tried to give it a public comment.
No, Mr. McDonald, we have expanded public comments to accommodate you. The fact of the matter is, that over the course of the last year and a half, since you abuse this process, and make no mistake about it, that's exactly what you do, you abuse this process. I've heard people sitting in the audience say, "Well, I have public comments, but I'm not gonna bring them up now." The fact of the matter is, that you abuse everybody else's right to speak. You abuse everybody else's right to come in and speak their mind.
How so?
Because, because you abuse the process. You chill people's interest in being here. You chill people's interest in making public comment, and you revel in wasting people's time. You celebrate, you are a, you are a serial obstructionist, and you celebrate the town's failures if you can find them or create the impression of one. The fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is, that you would rather see the town fail and take shots at people than you would see the town succeed and give one iota of credit to anyone sitting at this table or who serves the town in any way, shape, or form.
I just gave Mr. McCoy some credit.
You, yep, it took you two months to come up with one shred of something positive to say about anybody, and it was a backhanded way of trying to bait him. So listen, you can go to town meeting, and you can vote for the public, the new high school, and then come back and try and undermine it. You can, you can vote against your own article to preserve the high school, and then sign a petition to bring it back. You can play all the games you want. The fact of the matter is, that everybody who's watched one of these meetings, and there were 5,000 people who said, "We don't agree with you, Mr. McDonald", those 5,000 people gave this town a mandate which we've followed. So you can come here and abuse everybody's time and try and play gotcha. Do it all you want. It's not working.
Well, we were told we were gonna pay $164 in taxes.
Excuse me, excuse me.
Then we got another $100 bill. I didn't have my mind...
You're done.
Mr. Smiglia.
Okay. How about public comments? I'm sorry, point and dates.
No, you brought up a lot of things about my articles.
Point and dates.
And I don't want to hear it. Who's abusing the process?
March 15.
You are, as the big time chairman.
Okay, March 15.
You don't want to let people speak, and ask some answers, some legitimate questions?
March 15, the high school...
You're abusing the authority, because you know what? You have zero leadership ability.
March 15, the high school...
You know what? You have to recuse yourself from the manager's contract.
Okay, point and dates. March 15, the High School Building Committee will meet at the town hall, room 9, at 6:30 PM. On March 20, the Finance Committee and Planning Board will hold a joint public hearing relative to the warrant for the annual town meeting. It'll be at the Town Hall Auditorium at 7:00 PM. I'll remind residents who are interested that there is a registration deadline for the recreation program, Rookies T-Ball. That's March 22, if you want your youngster to participate. The board next meets on March 26, I believe. Is that correct?
27, board of selectmen.
I think it is the 26th.
26th?
Yeah.
Yep. And to just, if you would note that it's March 26. And the last day to register to vote in the town election and town meeting is April 6. The town clerk's office will be open until 8:00 PM on that day. And just advance notice for those folks who have pets, dogs, or cats. The rabies clinic will be held from noon to 2:00 PM on Saturday, April 7, at the Public Buildings Department. And later that day at 2 o'clock will be the annual Easter egg hunt.
Thank you. I need to take a motion to adjourn. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I missed right over. New business committee reports.
I'm all set, thank you.
I'm sorry. I do. A number of people have asked me about this information that's in the news about the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions being appealed to DEP relative to the first phase of the high school project. So the first point that I'd like to bring up is to ask the manager, if he can get for us the copies of the sign-in sheets for the Conservation Commission hearings. And I'll be specific why I'm asking for that. Everybody has a right to, to file appeals where the law allows it. I'm not arguing with anybody's legal right to do that. But some of what I read, if people are being accurately quoted, certainly seems to me they are, because it's in that kind of a medium, the online newspaper, it's offensive to me, what's going on. Over 5,000 people showed up to a special election on December 6. That's roughly double the number of residents who showed up for the presidential primary recently. I can't overstate, in my mind, the level of enthusiasm and the, and the concern that people had in that, on that issue on both sides. Over 5,000 people showed up and voted. Now, after the Conservation Commission, in consultation with the Conservation Administrator, and based on information generated by wetland scientists, engineers, and professionals that the town pays good money to hire, after the town does all of that, 10 residents filed an appeal that threatens to delay the project. And what's most disconcerting to me is I, when I look at the letter, which I know there's two appeals. There's 10, there's a group of 10 residents who's appealed, and then in a butter that's appealed. And on the 10 resident appeal, only two of those people bothered to go to town meeting to vote on that project. And yet, 20% of the people who've appealed are the only ones who've showed up. And the most, the public comments that I've read through the media, it appears that Suzanne Sullivan is the spokesperson for that group. She signed the appeal, signed the letter. She didn't even go to town meeting. She's not even one of the two. And one of those people, I don't even think is a registered voter. So I just can't, as much as I respect the process, to me, it's, it's outrageous. It's just outrageous. And I believe, I believe that...
Balance of power.
We will, I believe that we will, we'll take care of this. We'll get beyond it. We'll work our way through it, you know, in the big picture. We'll keep that project on time and on budget. That's what I think will happen. But I think, you know, we should know, one of the, let me read one of the quotes that I've read. And again, I don't, I don't edit these things.
Can I tell you something, Mr. Chairman? It's the first I've heard of it, and it just blows my mind to hear this.
One of the things was, there's a quote, "You criticize others for trying to do the right thing. Get the facts and don't rush to judgment." And that's the proponent of this appeal. Suzanne Sullivan, I believe it's, the screen name appears to be Suzanne Sullivan, and she's the appellant here. "Get the facts and don't rush to judgment." How the heck can an appeal by 10 people, only two of whom who bothered to go to town meeting, I'm curious to know how many of them bothered to go to the Conservation Commission meetings, preaching to us about rushing to judgment and getting our facts straight?
I think they...
You know, we, the residents, this, this is not about the high school. Use your heads to think, not to be tools. I mean, to me, when, you know, I'm talking as a resident. I'm not talking as a selectman. I'm not talking about as a school proponent. I'm talking about somebody who took the time to vote, who took the time to go to special town meeting, who sat through ridiculous attempts at parliamentary maneuvers just to make everybody's day longer than it had to be and try and defeat what 98% of the people there wanted, okay? I'm talking about being one of those people. After all that time, energy, and money went into that process, and then speaking to residents and proponents of the project as if we're a bunch of ill-informed sheep that, that, you know, just vote the way some guy tells me to vote, it's outrageous. It's outrageous. So I'd like to, I'd like to...
You know, Mr. Chairman, can I say, who suffers more than anybody is the kids in this community?
You got that right.
It's the kids in this community, and I'll say it again. I'm saying it's self-satisfaction. It's all it is with some of these folks. And, you know, the women's, I could probably name, I call them the women's in nine. You know, they're constantly, you know, working to defeat the purpose of really good in this community. And it's really sad that the kids are really gonna be the ones who suffer. It's sad, real sad.
Are you familiar with the 200 size model president's answer study?
Yeah, any other new business...
Mrs. Smiglia?
No, you're out of order, Mr. McDonald. You are not on this board. You're out of order. Please, please. Now you're disrupting a public meeting.
Also...
Any other new business committee reports down there?
No, I just want to, I want to thank Mr. Newhouse for the comments and for putting that stuff on record. I think generally, a lot of folks, you know, they got impassioned about the high school project, and obviously showed up in, in volume to support it. And but generally, a lot of folks, I mean, we keep our eyes close to what's going on in our Wilmington and in government. We watch the press, all that kind of stuff, because we're just kind of close to it. But I think the general population isn't as close to it as us. And so they've kind of, I don't know, they've taken their eye off the ball, but they're not even aware that this stuff is happening. And I think it's really important, and I hope that this forum is an opportunity for folks to be aware. And I hope our members of the press will make the public aware that a very small number of people are undoing the, the public mandate that was set forth in December. And I think that's very unfortunate. These people that fancy themselves the watchdogs of the community, I think, are doing a disservice. So...
No, let's, just, I just want to be clear. You said they're undoing it. I don't think that's gonna happen.
Or attempted to. Thank you for clarifying.
Just want to say something, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Are you aware of that, Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McDonald, you are disrupting a public meeting. You're not on this board. We're done with public comments. Please, have a little respect.
I didn't have my five minutes.
You didn't get your five minutes. You got about 15, Mr. McDonald.
I'll just be two seconds, Mr. Chairman. When you just said the word watchdogs, they're more than watchdogs. They're attack dogs, simply put. So I wouldn't categorize them as watchdogs.
Self-described.
Go ahead, Mrs. O'Connell.
You know, I, there's been a lot that's been said tonight, and I'm also one of those staunch supporters of the education projects that have been discussed, and I stand by that. What I find to be problematic, and that I take issue with, and I too take offense to it, is that there's been an insinuation that whether you're a resident, or a human being, or a member of this board, or a member of the high school building project, that we're not committed to a safe environment, to committed, committed to safe drinking water, that we don't want to protect our wetlands, or any other aspect of the geography of this town. And I'm telling you, that's simply not true. There are obviously town regulations, state regulations, higher-end regulations that need to be followed. And I stand by the process, that we have a high school building committee. We've contracted service professionals, that we've worked with the MSBA to be involved in, to secure the other portions of the monies. And I believe that they've, this isn't their first time through this process. And I am going to put my faith in the hired professionals that we have sought out as a town to go after this project and see that it's done correctly. And I think that a town manager, or a selectman, or anyone is certainly not going to put the residents of Wilmington in harm's way, and to insinuate that we know that it's harmful and that we're still allowing a project to move forward, I think is completely outrageous, and I personally take offense to that. So I'm gonna let the professionals do their job. I'm gonna keep my ears open and keep my, my reading materials here, and I'm gonna attend the meetings as I have done. I think it's very enlightening for the statistics that Mr. Newhouse has shared. And I feel that, I'm shocked that you're the, one of the only people that are here, and the 10 people aren't here. So...
They compare their kids.
Well, you know, I just, I just...
How can you not want to have a hearing about your kids' studies in the runoff?
To me, it's not, I never said that, first of all, I...
Mr. McDonald, please. We'll keep, please. You're done. You're done. You may be saying...
I don't understand, I don't understand why, why when I'm speaking, you feel the need to speak. I mean, every time anyone else has anything to...
Mr. McDonald.
You keep interrupting me. But, you know, I don't know, you know, I'm not gonna take directives from you. I'm simply making my comments. You know, back to, you know, you're making comments about hiring corporate presidents of companies so that we can double punch them and pay two salaries, so that they can go work for, you know, a company, and then we can pay them to be the town manager. So I'm trying to follow your logic, but I don't quite get it. So...
The past president, someone who's...
Well, it doesn't, I'm not even gonna go there.
Mr. McDonald, you're done.
Like I said.
And become the town manager, and be great at it.
Okay, are you, are you all set down there?
Like I said.
You're not supposed to comment on the manager. I thought, you're not gonna leave this up? You're not gonna do this or something?
Alls I'm simply stating is that you're all over the map, and you have erratic behavior. If I'm making a comment about something, I have the right to make the comment.
You're not on the board, Mr. McDonald, now you're interfering with a public meeting, you're done, you're done. You may be saying it again, you're done. You're done, Mr. McDonald. Are you all set down there with public comments, with new business committee reports?
I'm all set. The bottom line is, is that we're protecting the drinking water. That's all I want to get across.
You don't want to have a hearing on your cancer studies. You're not even aware of those?
Yeah.
I'm unaware of them.
You don't want to protect...
We have a motion to adjourn, a second, all in favor?
Okay.
Any enemies?